We're a fourth of the way through our fiscal year. We've received about nineteen percent of our budgeted operating revenue and spent about twenty percent of the budgeted operating expenditures. And there is nothing really significant to report in this this month. Everything seems to be on track. We're right about where we should be.
Right where we should be.
Yeah.
Great, short and sweet.
Sure.
Does anyone have any questions? At the report? Okay, great, thank you. Now it's time for Todd's report.
Sure, I'll just review some of the staff, some of the key initiatives that are taking away town staff over the past month. We-
Todd, could you speak up a bit? It's a little hard to hear you. Thank you.
I have my volume all the way up.
No, it's on our end. It's our end.
Oh.
But go ahead.
Don't take it personally.
You can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
The staff assisted with responding to the Corso Chevy Chase redevelopment, which we'll discuss tonight, as well as the Bethesda Market Park development project and matters related to the Bethesda overlay zone, all of which will be discussed tonight. We researched details on the county's gas-powered leaf blower ban, recently enacted ban. We managed town park and waterway improvement projects, including Zimmerman Park renovations and Coquelin Run stabilization. We also worked with the town civil engineer, continued to work with the town civil engineer to develop concept plans for stormwater management improvements on Leland and Woodbine Streets. We tried to address median cleanup on Connecticut Avenue, and we're continuing to press S H A to do that median cleanup. We're also addressing sidewalk accessibility issues at Connecticut and Bradley. We've scheduled some sidewalk grinding to make sidewalks, uneven sidewalks level in multiple locations to prevent trip hazards throughout the town, and that will occur next Thursday. We oversaw an installation of additional storm drain outlets on Thornapple Street and oversaw the ongoing W S S C water main replacements and repairs on Thornapple Street and Leland Street. We also installed eighty-eight ramps at each intersection along Bradley Lane, an LED stop sign at Leland and Oak Ridge. We organized and attended the fall trash and treasures, prepared to rebid the household organic waste collection contract, assisted with the F Y twenty-three audit and provided project support to town committees. That ends the staff report.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any questions at all? I could, do you tell us a little bit, Dave, about the Coquelin Run stabilization? If there is an update for that?
Oh, thank you. Great minds think alike.
Sure. After four months, the Army Corps of Engineers has assigned our project to a plan reviewer is the most recent update. So it's not approved, but it seems like it's heading in that direction. So I guess we'll keep hammering away at them until they give us the okay. We've gotten the necessary signatures on the right-of-entry agreements and the ongoing maintenance easements that we'll need, except for one who's promised to come in and sign it as soon as they're available during a weekday. So I think once we get those two pieces in place, I've got D N F Construction is working up a price based on a contract. So we're hope still hopeful that they'll be able to to do the work under one of their ongoing parks contracts. So hopefully, once we get all the pieces in place, we should be able to get moving on it pretty quickly.
And so has M D E come back about the long-eared bat ecosystem habitat question?
Yeah, I guess M D E approved it, but then the long-eared bat designation is what actually kicked it up to the Army Corps of Engineers for further review. So that's where it's been stuck and hopefully getting unstuck. But they haven't made the final approval, but I think it's-
So so planning can still approve, but we'd still be waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers? Is that-
Yeah, M D E's approved it, so everything is ready to go, except for that approval based on the review of the long-eared bat habitat by the Army Corps.
Right.
So that's the last the last piece.
Thank you.
How about Zimmerman?
Sure. Zimmerman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have any any further news about Zimmerman and approvals there?
We do. That is also moving through the process. I guess the county erosion and sediment control review, you got assigned to a new reviewer, but they're close to approving the plans. We had our downstream analysis, which is the D O T review that was submitted and approved. We have one, we're working with S H A on one comment about the sidewalk alignment where it meets the sidewalk that's in that S H A right-of-way. That's a minor change that is the only comment there. W S S C easements are in for review, and all the legal paperwork has been processed, but it's awaiting their attorneys to to give the final okay before they're recorded.
Are that is is W S S A still concerned about our undertaking work when they might imminently undertake any further upgrade of their system? That was a concern before that they had.
Yeah.
They've decided that's not very likely event, so they don't have to worry about
We've asked, they said they don't currently have plans to do any any work on those pipes.
Away from that concern.
I mean, it's always a concern because W S S C is notorious for saying that pipes are fine and then having a main break and then coming in and replacing them. But they've indicated to us that there aren't currently plans for any of that work.
So. Forty-sixth Street with the W S S C valve replacement that's still on hold or waiting for something?
Yeah, they're waiting to design another valve replacement that they're planning to do simultaneously. So that's held up.
Is that another part of Bethesda or?
That's such a big main, I'm honestly not exactly sure where it is. But yeah, they, obviously their August schedule got missed and we, I've asked for an update, but they don't have one, but it'll probably be sometime next year.
Next year, okay.
I want to thank the town staff for following up with grinding the edges of some of the sidewalks.
Yeah.
I know in the past, we've had a sort of an informal thought that let's redo the whole sidewalk or rather do the grinding, but so many municipalities do grinding, it works fine, it makes it safe. And it's, you know, that allows you to take care of a lot of these things without having to wait for a formal repaving process. So I'm pleased you're doing that.
Yep, so yeah, they have a day's worth of work, we'll do it as a test pilot, and if it works, we can expand it as as we need to.
Thank you. And the last question I had for for Todd, have we gotten a date for the East-West Highway crosswalk design review? They they said it would be before Thanksgiving. Do we have? Okay, so maybe next month we'll get closer. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, appreciate that. Great, so now it's time for public comments. If anyone has a, yeah. Thank you, Sheila.
I'm Sheila Blum, and I'm here on behalf of the Climate and Environment Committee to talk about a favorite subject of yours. I'm sure the gas-powered leaf blower ban. I just have some brief remarks and summary on where the committee's thinking is right now or rec some suggestions. You are very well aware as members of the council of many of the points in favor of a year-round ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, the noise, the health impact on the workers, greenhouse gas and pollutants generated, and that the cost of battery-powered leaf blowers has come down significantly and that several nearby jurisdictions already have year-round bans. And very importantly, you're aware of the full ban that has just been passed by Montgomery County to take effect in July of two thousand twenty-five, which will also apply to the town. However, the town currently has only a partial year ban, which means that there are still two fall seasons in which we will have to endure the noise and the other negative impacts of gas-powered leaf blowers. To partially remedy that, the town's Climate and Environment Committee strongly recommends that the town council pass a year-round ban now to be effective January two thousand twenty-four. Thus, this fall would be the last season in which gas-powered leaf blowers would be permitted in the town. We fully appreciate that the town council needs to weigh pros and cons and consider possible resident objections to any proposal that you consider. But the committee believes that there are no longer any valid objections to a year-round ban because virtually every landscaper knows that a partial ban has been in place in our town for two years. Virtually every landscaper working in this area has already purchased battery-powered blowers. And most significantly, the sense of town residents was made very clear by the recent comments on gas-powered leaf blowers sent to the town. The response was resounding support for a year, full-year ban. Twenty of twenty-one comments, and there may maybe more have come in, were in favor of enacting such a ban as soon as possible. To facilitate successful implementation of a full-year ban, gas-powered leaf blower ban, the committee would employ a robust education and information campaign utilizing signs, forecast newsletter, town neighbors' messages, flyers, and so on. The committee also recommends beginning with a soft enforcement campaign. It would focus on notifying violators with an informative, small English-Spanish card, which has been utilized in the village, Chevy Chase Village, and could be distributed to all town residents in case they wanted to utilize it, and also for use by the town staff to pass out to violators. Fines could be limited to repeat and egregious violators. I'll give you a, when I'm finished, I'll just let you have a copy of that card. And finally, we recommend, the committee recommends that Hughes, the town's landscape contractor, be exempted during leaf collection season until any county restrictions on such equipment that they might use would come into effect. So the Climate and Environment Committee urges the town council to pass a full-year, year-round gas-powered leaf blower ban, pardon me, to be effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. And we feel confident that a full ban would be welcomed by a large majority of our town's residents. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Hello, Joe Fontana, forty-two oh eight Rosemary Street. I understand from Todd that at the last meeting, it was presented a replanting bid, this for Rosemary Triangle Park, replanting bid, and there was a request from the town council to explore picnic bench, I'm sorry, bench locations. And if that means that the whole expansive Climate and Environment Committee plan is narrowed to just that, that makes a lot of people really happy. On the subject of the benches, just wanted to kind of share that I'm I'm around that park two, three, four times a day, know a lot of people that are there the same. I've never heard one person that's in support of benches that would want benches, use benches. So I'm not who sure who wants benches in that park. I don't know anyone who is. I'm not saying that there isn't. But I question the need for benches in general. The other thing that really concerns us is if you look at that park, the only real semi-flat area is outside the sidewalk. I'm assuming there's safety issues because it's so close to the street to put benches there. And if they were there, I'd probably be hitting the person's feet as I was walking by because it's so narrow. But it appears to me, and I'm not a civil engineer, but anything inside of the sidewalk with the slope of that park is going to require regrading, redevelopment, and that alarms a lot of us. I know that no one's suggesting that now, but just wanted to kind of put that out there that there is, there would be major, major opposition to that, any regrading inside the sidewalks of that park. So just, that's all, that's all I wanted to share. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone on the line that has a public comment? I can't, I can't tell how many people might, don't see, there might not be.
There aren't any, Irene.
Excuse me? There aren't any?
There are none.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Great, so let's. Right, but I don't believe he has his hand up, so. So let's dive into some council discussions. First up is Corso. Let's see, we just, on October the fourth, the developers' site, site submittals, I'm sorry, my God, site plan submittal was accepted by the planning department as being a full application now ready for full analysis and and feedback. The October fourth date kicked off a one-hundred-and-twenty-day shot clock, which equates to February the first as the site plan will be put in front of the planning board for approval purposes. So that's, that's where we're going. In between, there's going to be a meeting on Monday, the sixteenth of October, which will involve all the different agencies that have reviewed different aspects of the plan. The town is considered and is going to be a part of this meeting. And will, the idea here is to relay any sort of questions, concerns that that each of the individual agencies might have about the plan and relay those accordingly to each other to make sure there's no conflicts. Effectively, the town must submit comments, town in accordance with every other agency out there, must submit comments by noon the twentieth of October in preparation for a Design Review Committee, D R C, meeting on the twenty-fourth of October at nine-thirty. That will be a meeting with the applicant where all these different opportunities will occur for the applicant to ask any clarification questions on the questions and concerns that the agencies have and then prepare an additional submittal. We will continue as a town to ensure that with respect to water drainage, site access, including ingress and egress, lighting, landscaping trees, you know, what that's all going to look like, as well as building materials, will be more clear, if you will, what their plans are more clear to the town so we can effectively communicate with residents on any, any concerns that we might have, or of course, communicate with the applicant accordingly. I think that that effectively summarizes. I'm so sorry. Yes, the phase one and phase two landscape, what that's going to look like. Thank you. Thank you for that. I think that effectively is where where we are, and we'll see for for next month, more more discussions.
I mean, could I encourage you and Todd to put that fully into the minutes?
Yeah.
Into the reporter? Because I think it's really important to get that out there and potentially even bed in that a separate town crier, so that everybody in the town knows the schedule and aware of all that would be good.
Yeah, there's a, there is a link to all the files, and then there's a link that Todd has kind of categorized, you know, this belongs with landscaping, this is belonging with water, you know, we we-
Well, that's helpful, I saw that. I meant specifically the timeline schedule, so the residents aren't surprised about the dates and how compressed the schedule is.
Yes.
Just more information's out there, better, just so they don't think they've got, they can come up and say to something. We don't want someone coming to us in December and saying, I know I'm in really good time because I'm six weeks before the public hearing.
Right.
And for us, I'm sorry, it's too late. So we just don't want that to happen.
Absolutely. I think that's a good idea to put together a meaty town crier that will outline the one-hundred-and-twenty-day schedule, the information links to files as as people, and then what we're going to be focusing on in terms of town responses or town, making sure everything's ticking and tying. Does that work? Okay. Any other thoughts? Todd, do you have anything else on the on the Corso front?
I don't.
Thank you. Bethesda Market Park. So, boy, there are updates and then there's no updates. It's-
Yeah, I know. Deja vu all over again. The, basically, finally, the county has now submitted back to the developers, the G D A, the General Development Agreement, someone is saying, geez, yeah, right? Which sets out the basic means of transfer of the land from the county to the developers, their responsibilities for developing it, and the the planned payments that would be made, or at least the the schedule of payments that would be made for this. The, this agreement only just came across the transom last week. You may recall when we had the county executive here that we raised this and he said he'd look into it. So maybe that made some difference, who knows? But in any event, it is, at least that document has now been generated. The developers have only just reviewed it, and they do believe that there's, that there's certainly a lot of questions that have to be addressed for them to know whether it's really a structure that really is workable for them. And one of the issues that is not directly addressed, and they have to follow up and pursue, is the fundamental question they have, which is, is there going to be, will there be a means for them to be reimbursed for the development work that they'll be undertaking over the next eighteen months prior to the time that there's a construction close and the actual transfer of the parking lot to the developers to own? And that they have to explore. So the, they are going to be asking for a meeting with Chris Conklin, the head of the Department of Transportation, a joint meeting with him and with the lawyers from the county executive's Attorney General's Office to to be able to try to wrestle with all that and really start working through that document and try to see if they can make it work for themselves. So that's the next step that I think is the most concrete one. In the meantime, I think there's not much happening in terms of the parks agreement with the developers, other than the developers have said they're finally going to mark that up and send it back to them. But I think there's going to be sort of a real waiting to see just exactly how the county structures its agreement, and that in turn is going to inform to some degree how the parks will want to proceed. So anyway, we're still going very slow. That's the simple truth. And if I can just touch on my testimony for tomorrow, Irene, am I right?
Of course.
So Irene, as you know, is going to be giving the town's testimony tomorrow with respect to the recommendation of the planning staff to to eliminate the hard cap for the Bethesda overlay zone. But I'll be giving three minutes of testimony to sort of pull out from all the heard general points. Now let's talk about one thing in particular. And and I think part of the reason why I'm animated to do this is that when we heard the presentation made by planning staff to the planning board three weeks ago about the recommendation to eliminate the the cap, I would say there's a very anodyne presentation given of just how wonderfully everything was going in the plan and all the parks were being developed, da-da-da-da. And I think part of the message, perhaps the main part of the message that I'd like to deliver is not so fast. There's actually, we are really in the trenches on this one, and we see what's happening and we see how slowly things are going, and we are very concerned. And there was a particular slide that Elson McCoy used where he said that the way forward to be successful, how, sort of like a question mark, is that the communities must have confidence or assurance, I've forgotten exactly what word he used, that the necessary infrastructure, including parks, traffic, roads, and and schools are all being built contemporaneously with the need as we build out this plan. So I want to take off from that slide and say, here's an example where we're not seeing that development. So I'm still working on it. I was away on vacation last week, got back late last night, so I've still, I've had rough draft, but by tomorrow morning it'll be done. But anyway, that's the major point, which is, here's a poster child for the kind of thing that we know is a centerpiece of this plan, delivering a major piece of infrastructure. And we're seeing it go really slowly. It's very frustrating, and it's not giving the necessary assurance to residents, but there is in fact this mutuality of infrastructure being developed at the same time that buildings are going up. And I think there may be a further point there, which is, if if there's a concern that developers are protesting that they need more headroom and more leeway as they're doing their plans, I think one of the messages back to them is, well, if you're concerned about that, why don't you get involved in making sure some of this infrastructure gets done also? You know, that sort of make this a mutual obligation on the part of everyone working in Bethesda, that it's not just up to others to make sure this infrastructure happens. If you're a developer, speak up, demand this infrastructure get built, because that's part of parcel, what's going to potentially give you some further leeway. But you can't expect residents to say, oh, yeah, flip off a switch of of height or density and and, you know, maybe, maybe not, the work will fall. Anyway, that's absolutely more Irene's point that she'll get into. But my point will just be highlighting the park here is something that could have gone a lot faster than it has and has to be worked on harder.
Thank you. Any questions on Bethesda Market Park? No? Okay, so we're going to dive right through to the Bethesda overlay zone, and for the thousands that are going to be watching this recording afterwards, I'll give just a brief summary. On the, on September twenty-eighth, there was a planning department briefing in front of the planning board about the Bethesda downtown plan, specifically about the Bethesda overlay zone. When the plan was developed or adopted in two thousand seventeen, there was a hard cap of nine million, additional nine million square feet of density that could be built and purchased by developers so that the the fund that would be created would help create parks. So when, when the planning department provided this very rosy picture as to the success of the Bethesda downtown plan, the ultimate recommendation, one amongst four, was to eliminate the hard cap altogether because there are tools in place now that that the planning department did not have previously, that would now allow for an unlimited, if you will, density, because each project will be in accordance, will be evaluated and everything will be fine. So we're, our testimony, and this is after speaking with the Long Range Planning Committee members, as well as some, some other just residents, interested residents, have, I'm going to be delivering testimony, I'm, I don't know if it's a good thing or not, but I have six minutes tomorrow, and I'm using five minutes and fifty-five seconds of it to effectively talk through that while the Bethesda downtown plan has done great in terms of of attracting development to the downtown area, the associated infrastructure and other promises that were made as a part of the downtown plan have not been delivered. And so it'll, it effectively goes through six main points of anywhere from the the lack of funding for this infrastructure, specifically parks, but then also for transportation improvements. The fact that even though we've reached the soft cap, which is seven million square feet, only three million of that has been built. So and and of the three million built, the two big office buildings are well under, you know, capacity. The Avicet Building is eighty percent vacant, as an example. So we're not yet living with the true seven million square feet yet. So it's a little bit premature from our, from our standpoint to say that that we have excess infrastructure capacity. In addition to that, we're unclear what these tools are that the planning department has that are going to be replacing the concept of having a soft cap and a hard cap. Those have not been explained. The idea that from a traffic perspective, everything's okay or is within the models doesn't take into a fact that we're still dealing with the COVID kind of reactions of COVID, meaning people, for the most part, are still working from home. That hasn't really made its way back. And that there's other types of vehicle trips that are not incorporated into the N A D M S numbers. With that being said, we're still experiencing high traffic volume in certain intersections. One pain point is Wisconsin and Bradley, so we're going to talk a little bit about that. We're going to talk about how, aside from not having any new parks, we don't have a lot of affordable housing stock. In fact, when you take pound for pound, it's less affordable, naturally occurring affordable housing than we had before the plan, because a lot of these different properties are at the end of their useful life and are being replaced by development, development that's a lot more expensive and and absolute numbers are less, the less numbers of of affordable housing than we had before. In addition, there's a ton of studies that haven't been done that were identified in the plan. And then we have the growth, growth and infrastructure policy. So a separate effort that's undertaken as of September twenty-eighth is they're going to update the growth and infrastructure policies to be called the- September twenty eighth is they're going to update the growth and infrastructure policies to be called the subdivision sector plan. Now it's GIP and it's going to be updated for twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight. Why eliminate the hard cap before the new GIP is in place? So effectively, we ask a lot of questions or I ask a lot of questions of work that needs to be done and, and data that needs to be analyzed before making this determination. We don't need to wait a year to do this. We just need to ask the hard questions and, and get the answers. And that's what I'll be talking about tomorrow. So it's very quick. The testimony, the public testimony is tomorrow. But the record will stay open either through November first or November eighth. The planning board has not made the determination yet which date they're going to make a vote and the decision to pass on to the county council. And the county council will effectively delegate it to the PHP committee, which is headed up by council member Fritzen. And he himself has expressed like, hey, we, we don't need to do this like super duper fast. We, we need to make sure we take the time and, and do this right, which is, which is good. It's good to hear that. And that's it. That's all I got on that. Any questions, concerns? Okay. Then I
Thank you for your work on the testimony.
Oh, no worries. Only took like thirteen tries, that's all. But lucky thirteen. So I believe the last item for, at least on the agenda, is the gas powered leaf blower ban and enforcement. So as we all know, county council passed a ban to, to ban the sale of gas powered leaf blowers and vacuums handheld in, in July of twenty twenty four and ban the use of the equipment in July of twenty twenty five. So I guess there's a couple of questions before us today. Number, number one, how do we all feel about that in terms of? It's, it's obviously the equipment that is being banned is, is more comprehensive than we have in our current partial ban. And the second part of it is, what, what, what do we, I'm sorry, the first part of it is what do we, how do we want to react to the, the ban date? And the second part of it is, what do we do with respect to enforcement, you know, going forward? So I'll open it up to, if you want to, if you have a statement to me on the, the ban itself, the timing.
Yes, thank you. So we've already had a comment from the co-chair of the Climate and Environment Committee. I am the other co-chair and I will reiterate the, the committee's position that we feel that it's really great. The county has enacted this legislation and we're looking forward to it. And the committee still believes the town should ban, should, should execute a full year ban of this equipment starting in twenty twenty four. So that means we would, this would be our last leaf blowing season with gas powered leaf blowers. And that we would continue our current enforcement regime as written in the ordinance and that in twenty twenty five, as I understand it, and the town manager may correct me, we wouldn't have to do anything to opt into the county's noise reduction ban because we are already a party to it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, we're just opting in.
We would, right. So we, I guess we could make a declaration that we opt in, but I think technically we wouldn't really have to do anything so that it would, it would just apply to us. You know, the town took some action early on. We kind of, you know, put our stake in the ground that, you know, we wanted to protect residents from this equipment. At the time, it was, it, it was really meaningful because it happened during the pandemic when most of us were working out of our homes and the noise from that equipment was just so disruptive. Something that we had, you know, many of us probably hadn't noticed when we were all working in offices. And then of course, secondarily, although we may not regulate this, the, the emissions from that equipment is also quite noxious and very unpleasant. I think the town, although it's very difficult to get a hundred percent compliance with any law, I think we've seen some success. We've, you know, I don't know what the percentage is and perhaps staff can correct me on that, but you know, we've got pretty good compliance with this. I think we could do, you know, we can always improve in terms of our communication to residents and landscapers on the use of this equipment and that the town does have a ban in place. So we can always improve there. I think once the county law goes into full effect in twenty twenty five, we're probably still going to have to do quite a lot of communication on that because it's not clear what kind of bandwidth yet the county will have to enforce this. So until that becomes clearer, I think we should assume that communications on this will have to be quite robust on our part. And I foresee a time when, you know, just like, you know, twenty years ago, you used to see people standing outside of buildings smoking because it was forbidden to smoke inside. Now it's quite shameful to stand outside a building and smoke a cigarette. So one of these days it's going to be like that for glass, gas powered leaf blowers.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Um, I actually have a question for you and the committee, Joy. Are you all in favor of starting a year round ban that would also ban in the spring? Do you want to start early in twenty twenty four or, or in advance of the fall?
We, so our current law bans the use of the equipment already for nine and a half months of the year. So, so you're not allowed to use gas powered leaf blowers in the springtime anyway.
Oh, I had thought that there was an exemption in the spring too.
So, yeah, so really what we're advocating is, you know, we just, you know, get rid of the exemption that we have allowed for big time leaf blowers. Okay.
I thought you were asking the other equipment that the county has banned, which is there's, there's the blowers and then there's the vacuum, but you weren't asking that question.
I was asking a question that is moot.
No problem. Any other questions that you have?
I don't, I don't have any other questions. I will, I will say that I, I agree that we should go ahead with the year round ban starting in twenty four. I think the sentiment is there. I don't think there's any reason not to. I think it will make the fall much more pleasant and I think we're ready for it. Folks have been on notice for a while now who are doing landscaping here and, and certainly our town residents are aware of, of the ban. I don't think it will be prohibitively difficult to communicate that we are starting our ban earlier than the county. I, I don't necessarily think that we need to go as broad as the county and we haven't really discussed that very much in here anyway, in terms of the other, other equipment and machinery that you had raised. I've said before that I'm very much in favor of continuing a subsidy or restarting a subsidy program of some sort. I, I don't have any particular parameters for it in mind. I would certainly want to be mindful of making sure that it's relatively easy for us to administer. But I do think, I do think that we should reopen that when we go to a year round ban and in advance of Montgomery County doing the same. I think the county has a, is going to be doing a subsidy program, right?
Yes.
A rebate program.
A rebate program. It's great.
Thank you. That's it. Barney and Rich, do you have any?
Well, I, first of all, I like the recommendations of the committee.
Can you turn on your mic and also speak a little bit louder? Thank you.
Thank you. No, I, I, I do like the recommendations of the committee. I think those are reasonable things for us to do. And I, I did want to highlight some of the things that the staff has told us is that we have not observed a single company with three violations in a single year. So, you know, enforcement's almost moved. I mean, because it's not happening, their violations aren't happening. And they haven't received, they, they have not received any two party noise complaints. So, I mean, if you're looking for enforcement, there's nothing to enforce really. There's not any big, big big violators out there. But the committee, I think rightfully said is that, you know, if we're going to, if we are going to continue with our enforcement regime, you know, do it for the repeat and egregious violators, but we don't have any, haven't had any, so. But, but it's, it's a reasonable thing for us to do. The other thing is that we're, we would effectively be abandoning only extending our ban for twenty twenty four from October thirty first to December third. So we're not talking about a significant difference between now that we would, if we would institute a full year ban. The other thing is, is in rereading the, the committee's letter that they sent to us on this a while ago, the economics are, are in favor of these companies moving to electric anyhow. I mean, it's, it, it, it's just becoming more economical to operate these, these electric blowers than it is for the gasoline blowers in terms of life cycle cost. So I don't particularly see a need to continue any subsidy for the town. But when the county puts its ban and it covers more equipment, then I think that the, we, you know, we ought to let the county take up the rebate instead of us. So that's, you know, I, I, I just think we, we need to extend it. I, I was concerned about Hughes, our, our landscape scaper. And by the time October of twenty twenty four rolls around, we may be able, I'm, I'm not sure when the contract ends for them, but my guess is them seeing on the horizon the county ban, that they will move very quickly to purchase equipment to meet the county ban. So I, I don't see really a need for us to exempt them either from the, the, the use of, of, of electric equipment. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
First, the question is, would Hughes be caught up in the legislation of the county? Would they have to change their practice to battery powered?
Not the vacuum?
Not the vacuum. So the thing that makes ninety percent of the noise could still be on the road, but the thing that, got it. Okay.
And they did come back with an estimate that showed, I believe for fifty thousand dollars, they, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, that it would, to, to meet the, the timing requirements for cleanup, they would add a second truck with a second vacuum. And, and through the two trucks and the four workers that are going to go with battery powered for fifty thousand dollars, they'd be able to take care of.
And generate more noise.
And generate more, effectively more noise to get, and more carbon emissions, if you think about it. But it would be fulfilling the law.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm assuming that was for this, this fall's pickup as well. That was an increase for this fall's.
So the contract with Hughes runs through twenty twenty five. It needs to be renegotiated twenty twenty five. So it was for twenty three and twenty four.
Right. So I, again, I reiterate that they know the ban's going to take place in twenty twenty five. Any work they do in the county is going to not be allowed to have gas power. So when we're ready to renegotiate, it'll already be passed that they can't use it. So their bid's going to be what it's going to be to, to fulfill the service.
It's going to be what it's going to be.
I guess my thoughts are the following. I, I, first of all, I'm completely in support of, of a year round ban. In principle, it's not the issue. And I think what the county's done is just fine. And I'm happy to actually have them extended to some other kinds of equipment as well. I'm also completely in support of a strong educational campaign starting this winter for, before people sign the contracts up even in twenty twenty four to put them on notice that, you know, that the fall season is going to be changing. I still find myself, however, still on the fence to being opposed to doing it in twenty twenty four. As you just observed, we're talking, I mean, it's a practical matter, the leaf picking, picking up is really over by December fifteenth. So as a practical matter, we're talking about eight weeks. And, and I, for that short a period of, and also where a lot of contractors have already shifted over. It's not like it's, you know, all the contractors go back to their gas powered leaf blowers during that heavy fall period. So I, I still have the view that in terms of, and I guess I say this because notwithstanding the review of Stu Sessions and the committee that I respect very much, I'm still, I still feel on thin ice about the economic consequences to the, to the landscape companies. That I'm not sure I fully understand or feel confident about a broad statement that they should be able to switch easily enough. And to me, one of the reasons to provide the longer ramp is because it means for those contractors who have to replace their equipment anyway, they would in that case purchase a battery powered system instead of a new gas powered leaf system. And that effectively helps them in that transition. The, what my concern is that, that you would be in a transition that occurs as of October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, you're going to find a number of landscapers who will have essentially perfectly good gas powered leaf blowers and not be able to amortize them. And that's just money out of, out of their pockets. If they had that season, but they were now, because I think that equipment only lasts about three years, the way they use it. There's a whole another third of all that equipment that's going to be dying off anyway and has to be replaced. They'd replace it with a battery powered system and they have essentially, the, the delta of the, of the cost is not the full cost. It's the cost minus what they would otherwise had to have paid to have bought a new gas powered system, which is otherwise what they would had to have done. So to me, I, I err on the side of, in lack of, of, of absolute knowledge, I err on the side of giving the contractors a bit more of a break, even at the cost of inconvenience and the noise for eight weeks. That's where I am at the moment. If I were to, and I will, commit myself to looking harder into this. But I think clearly those in the town who are very strongly in favor of affecting the ban from October of twenty twenty four have spoken and have gotten a lot of people involved. I don't know if everybody who might be adversely affected has spoken. And so I think this is an example of where a public hearing could be very informative to all of us. And so I guess, you know, clearly hearing the sentiment of my colleagues, if that's what the council wants to do, I would just say that in terms of my own vote, I would, I won't be, you know, definitive tonight, but I would want to do some more thinking about it and pay close attention to the, the public hearing. And also I think it'd be good to try to again, reach out and have some conversations with some of the landscaping companies and make sure that we have their views. And, you know, the impact is that, that either some contractors just drop out of the town or charge a lot more, in which case residents might see increases that they haven't even thought through. So that's why I'm just feeling, you know, we're on a good glide path. We'll be rid of all gas powered leaf blowers, no matter what, by January first, twenty twenty five. I'm just not that exercised one way or the other about eight weeks in the fall of twenty twenty four. And again, I would err on the side of caution and not trying to disrupt the, the, the businesses of the, of the contractors. That's my thought.
Thank you. To, to pick up on that a little bit, it is, I think, helpful that the county banned the sale of this equipment come next summer. So the, the word will, will continue to spread if they, if they don't know and perhaps some of you, I, I was able to forward on a communication that's come out, at least from the Rainscapes program to, to their list of, of companies, landscaping companies saying, look, it's been it's been passed, but we want to hear from you about what you all need to see for a subsidy program, which, a rebate program, which I, I thought was, was a nice kind of positive message there. I do want to remind my colleagues that Montgomery County Public Schools and the County Parks Department, you know, the, the dual are not, it can't be enforced, this ban. So we have a situation where, talk about confusion, where neighbors who are across the street from Chevy Chase Elementary School and, or, and/or across the street are walking by this particular area, very well might see people past 2025 that are going to be utilizing gas-powered leaf blowers. They are, they cannot, cannot be enforced through public schools because it's state agencies. So we, we have a double issue here in terms of you want to talk about confusion and you want to talk about the necessity of having good education, that it is entirely possible that even if it's banned in this town, people will still see gas-powered leaf blowers and there isn't a gosh darn thing we can do about it. Only in the schoolyard and, and here, only in the lot. That's correct. Here in Elm Street Park. So I think that that bears, you know, consideration here, because one of the things that I kept hearing from the, the Climate and Environment Committee is like, hey, it's really confusing for residents. Well, that's going to be super duper confusing. You know? So I am personally still kind of weighing more on, let's, let's kind of go with the flow of, of the county education. They're going to be a lot better about repeating the message, whether it's through the postcards and, and we can, we can reiterate that message. We can spend some, some funds and copy the wording and make sure everything is consistent across the board. However, if my colleagues feel that it's important for 2024 to be included, then so be it. But I, I'm just letting you know that I'm, I, I think it's extra confusing for our little community because of the, not, I won't say exemptions, but the inability for the county DP to enforce on school grounds and on, in the parks and in this area. So that's what I got. So how do you all want to proceed? Do we want to, do we want to have it put forth in November, a public hearing to discuss the, the option of, of 2024 ban? How do we want to do this?
I, I don't think you can have a public hearing.
Or a public forum?
We could have a forum asking residents to come and present their views. But a public hearing could only happen after we'd introduced.
Introduce legislation, right.
Which, if, if it were introduced next month, could be, a public hearing could be December, but it couldn't be before then.
Or what do we want to do?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of having a town forum on this issue so that we could hear from our residents. And, you know, hear from the school. I mean, at this point, that's already been occurring then. I haven't been over by Chevy Chase Elementary when they've been blowing leaves, but we've had our ban in place for two years and, you know, they've presumably been able to blow those gas-powered leaf blowers the whole year when our ban has been in effect. So that's not going to be any different. So yeah, I'd be highly in favor of having a town forum on this issue so we can hear from residents.
Okay. How do you all feel about that?
I think a forum's a good idea.
Okay. Sir? Okay. So the intent will be to have a forum on this. Are we inviting certain folks to speak at the forum? Forums usually entail an educational component followed up with, you know, public views. How, how do we want to proceed?
I, I'd like to hear from some contractors personally.
Okay.
Question would be, is, is Ray, bear down on it and say, you know, you're going to have to get rid of this stuff by, by 2025. So, so, you know, what's the, what's the difference to you between doing that?
Would it be? Would it be possi-, I know Ray Brothers handles operations for Somerset and, and we have Hughes. Is that what you're thinking about, big town or, or, or smaller entities?
Some combination, I guess.
Combination. Is it, would it be possible to, to have Todd, you and Dave reach out and see if we can't get a, a, a small company and a larger company and come here and?
We use a small company. I'd be happy to ask him. It really is him.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah.
He's one of the guys in trucks without any signage and, you know, so I'd be, I'd be happy to ask my guy.
I'm just, he is licensed for, in the county for, okay, that's, I just want to make sure that we're.
His English is good and he'd be willing to appear?
I believe so. I will bet it.
Okay, all right.
What about somebody from DEP explaining the counties? Or some representative from them to give an highlight of what the county's going to do?
Todd, um, Todd, did you have an opportunity to talk with anybody at DEP about how they're planning to enforce their ban?
DEP for this issue.
I didn't hear what he said.
Will you repeat that?
Yes, I have a point of contact at DEP for this issue.
Okay.
So you would see if they would be willing to come to our forum and discuss what the county. Okay.
Great. Okay. Well, with that being said, there were some questions submitted by town staff about clarifying the enforcement procedures we currently have in place. Nothing that would necessarily change or depending on. If you wouldn't mind, if you don't have it in front of you, I'll, I'll just read them off one by one and we can discuss accordingly. The first question is, you know, we're a few years into the partial ban, right? Which of course by October 15th, we're, we're back to regular operations, if that's the right term. During the, the current, during the partial year ban, do we continue with a three-strikes approach for citations? Meaning you've received two warnings and then a third results in a citation. To date, there hasn't been a single company with three violations in a single year. And they've not received any two parties. So, but are we still good with the concept of a three-strikes, you're, you got the citation. Okay. Okay, okay.
Yeah, well, those are, like, as violations observed by staff and we still struggle with if we get a call that somebody is using them by the time we can get there, the company's gone or we get there and they're not using.
So, and I think, so we're saying validated. Verified, verified violations. Yes, okay. The second is the, the preference that was communicated is that to issue, if there comes to a point to issue a citation, that the town council had said issue it to companies as opposed to residents or equipment operators, like the person who's actually there in town. The thing is, in order to identify, to, to get a citation to a company, you need to be able to track down some information, including, A, you have to find that that company is legit, something, as you know, there's a lot of trucks that don't have their names written on the, on the side. Then find the resident agent for that company to send the citation through certified mail. You know where this is all going, yeah? So do we instead look at a situation where the staff would provide the citation to the operator? The operator does not admit fault by accepting it, but at least it's someone there to be able to, to take it and sign for it. And then letting the operator sort out with, with the company. We can of course still let the resident know, by the way, your, your company received a, a citation. But it might result in less cycles for the town staff. So what do you think of that?
I, my, my first question is, how many citations have we issued? Okay, so to me, this is moot. You know, if we haven't issued any, we, we haven't issued it. So we haven't had to go through that process. And if we do, we have, if we have one or two for the coming year, I think giving it to the company is the right way to do it. Giving it to one of the operators out here, they're going to do what they do with their traffic tickets. Tear them up, that never gets anyplace else other than on the street and doesn't go to the company. It, it's just, you giving it to an operator is not the solution. Because it, it won't get to, it won't get back to the company in most instances. So I don't, I, I think they just ought to continue to do what they're, leave it in and if we get it, if we have to issue a citation, track down who the company owner is and issue the citation to them.
Even though there's additional cycles involved with tracking down?
If it's once, once this, it, it hasn't happened. So if it happens once this coming year, yeah, spend some staff time, give, send it to the company.
What, um, what does the site that, I haven't seen one of these citations. What does it say? Like what legal obligations, if any, does it impose on the receiver of the application?
A municipal citation that basically functions like any traffic ticket you get. So if it's issued, it has a fine, they can pay the fine. Or within 30 days, if they don't pay it, we can prosecute it through the court system. And so it's just like a traffic ticket. They can admit guilty and pay the fine, or they can request a court date, or they can not pay the fine and we can send it to the court for prosecution.
So to build on what Barney was, or what Rich was saying, if we haven't really gone through this in the first place, if we were to go through it, the reason to serve it on a certified agent or other listed agent of the company would be so that we could eventually enforce it in court. But if we don't care about that particularly, I would suggest that maybe we should just adopt a best efforts approach. If you all run into a situation where you really can't figure out who the owner of the company is, you can't figure out a registered agent, then serve it on the operator because that's better than nothing, but.
Process-wise, you know, if we're there and the operator's there, you know, if I come back to the office and try to find, look up the company, find out who the resident agent is, assuming I can find them, you know, that operator is gone. And so since those citations have to be served in person.
Well, presumably the operator would be back at some point if they have a contract with.
But we don't have any way of staking out the house and waiting for them to return.
But the point is, we haven't issued any. So it doesn't make, you know.
No, I, I don't, I don't agree that just because we haven't done it, therefore we shouldn't have a policy.
No, I, I'm saying leave the policy as it is. And issue the citation, but I, like Stephanie's, you know, do it on a, you know, give the, give information to the operator.
I mean, you could do both, actually, honestly.
To the operator and the.
You could, you could go ahead and give a citation to the operator and also serve the company.
Yeah, if we ever have to do it.
And that way, right, exactly. And that way, you don't have to run back to the office and then lose, lose it completely. And you do also tell the resident if, if a violation or citation, I'm sorry, if a warning or a citation is, it comes to that, right?
Most of the time.
Most of the time. Why, why wouldn't you give one to the resident?
If I see an operator and I don't have my people with me and I'm going somewhere else, I will tell them. And most of the time, we will circle back and drop something off.
Okay.
But just occasionally the day gets away from you and.
The only reason I ask that is that's another way to track down the company information because presumably there's a contract in place between the resident and the company.
Yeah, I don't think the residents would necessarily be cooperative. We say that we're trying to get the information of the company so that we can write the ticket.
Well.
I still like Stephanie's best efforts approach.
Yeah, okay.
You just, you know, we do what you can and.
Because the only ramification is really enforcing it in court at the end.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Just leave it as it is and do the best you can.
Yep. Okay. The next question is, but what, clarifying what landscaping means when we're talking about the use of these leaf, leaf blowers. So the interpretation right now is not to include gutter cleaning or like, let's say, construction debris, like just after a, a project or something like that. But there's some potential confusion around that, because residents are calling in to say, oh, gas-powered leaf blower in use. So what do we want to do? What do we want to include or not include in this? For now, for now, because we have another.
I think if, if the ordinance is, does not, I think we talked about this, the ordinance does not include gutters, as I recollect.
That's right.
Blowers used for landscaping.
Right.
Right.
So gutter, is gutter lands, is gutter cleaning landscaping?
Like leaves out of your gutter are you landscaping? That's landscaping to me, but that's okay. Either way, but I guess.
Again, I, I want to ask you, how many complaints have you gotten about equipment other than leaf blowers for blowing leaves on the, off the ground? Have we gotten?
For gutters, how many, how many complaints have we got?
A half dozen complaints about gutters.
In the last year? In the last year?
This calendar year.
Yeah.
I mean, you've got people building patios who are, you know, using them after construction work. Is constructing a patio landscaping or is that construction work? It's just not clear, so that's. There are enough complaints that I want to make sure that what we're enforcing is what's actually intended.
Thinking back to when we discussed this for an ordinance, I would say construction work was not intended to be included. That was considered to be a pretty rare situation on a given block. And not knowing how much debris or what there was, I just don't recall having any serious discussion that it was intended to include them. I also, my other recollection is, but I could be wrong about this, that we really were just focused on landscaping strictly defined and we were not including gutters. We did not include.
Snow blowers.
Snow blowers. That's right. We could change that, but again, in the context of something which is, is going into a sunset anyway, I, I'm not inclined to change something if we haven't been reading it that way now for a single season or two seasons before. It's all going to be, because when we get to 2025, it's going to, all gone anyway. So I think we ought to try to keep it consistent with how we've been doing it. To avoid, current practice, to avoid even more confusion to Irene's point before.
So if I understand it for gutter cleaning, they were using gas-powered leaf blowers to leaf the, to, to blow the leaves out of the gutter, but then use battery-powered blowers to clean it up off the lance, the grass?
No, I'm sure they were probably using gas.
Okay, okay. Just as long as I, you know.
They were blowing out the gutter.
At what point in the process you're. We were, we were in there. Yeah. Okay. Just wondering, because they, ultimately they are, I mean, just looking at it logically, they're ultimately, they're not going to follow the rule anyway because they got to blow the resulting, excuse me, the resulting leaves that were, okay, all right.
A company called Finer's Landscaping that's installing a patio.
Yeah, yeah.
Landscaping company.
That's right.
But they're doing.
Leaves. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Thank you. Between October 15th and December 31st, gas blowers are allowed, but the hours are restricted Monday through Friday, 10 to 6 and 12 to 6 on weekends. The informational materials are focused on the seasonal ban, but not on the restricted hours in the fall season. We, we haven't communicated, I mean, there's been like a forecast message, but we haven't communicated this that gas blowers are only allowed in the fall from ten, enough times. Yeah, yes. So it's been communicated in this past forecast. We need another one. Yep. Forget, yeah, we need more, we need more communication around that.
Right, absolutely. I remember a long discussion on that point and we, we wanted to make sure we restricted it during the weekends. And there was a question whether we would restrict it all day Saturday and allow Sunday or vice versa. And we finally sort of split the difference and said, half the day, both Saturday and Sunday will not be, have gas-powered leaf blowers. So we certainly do want that clearly understood.
But it gets us back to the, one of the recommendations of the, of the committee was the, you know, essentially do the, you know, the card. We, we already put something, we already have something like this ourselves that we hand out, as I understand it. And, but we need to make it clear in there that that we hand out, as I understand it. And, but we need to make it clear in there that the restrictive hours as well. Yeah.
I've developed a new one for.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Okay.
Is it like a postcard or is it a, um?
Just an eight and a half by eleven sheet.
And, and is it to be dropped at every home kind of thing? Like what was going to happen with that sheet?
I was going to use it for enforcement to actually.
Enforcement.
Companies in violation and then drop it out.
But not necessarily.
Send your copy to the house.
Yeah. Is it bilingual?
Yeah, well, the one.
So why wouldn't we do it as a preventative measure as well?
We, we could.
Okay.
We haven't.
Okay. Well, might want to consider that.
That's something the staff does or something the committee puts together or.
But yeah, I.
And I think it could be something, you know, that we have time to insert into the forecast for November.
For November.
So if everybody gets, everybody gets a look at what the thing is, um, and then we could just make additional ones available.
Okay. Okay. So we'll look at it for an, of November insert. Uh, the last part of this particular question, are violations of the work hours during the fall to be considered new violations or are they continuation of violations recorded earlier in the year? So someone has received, uh, one warning during the year, two warnings, one, another one in the summer. And then number three is, by the way, they're using the gas powered leaf blower, which is fine, but they're using in the wrong hour, which is not fine. Is that three strikes you're out or is that considered?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
That, that's fine. I, I assure you that companies are not aware that they can't start until after 10.
That's a communication thing.
Going back to the last point.
We need to be really careful. I don't know if it, I do not think it deserves to be a three strikes.
I hope for two strikes. Again, we haven't ever issued, I said, we haven't ever issued any. So it's moot. But the main, the main thing is communication.
The main thing is communication, but I agree it should be three strikes.
How about it's up to the, uh, discretion of town staff if they're, uh.
That's our opinion. Do what you want.
The last question is companies, uh, so, so there are times when, um, town staff shows up and it's in the middle of a job, uh, this, obviously I'm talking, it's October 12th, okay? And it's in the middle of a job, they're being told to stop and the company does not have a battery powered leaf blower at all. There's fear that they would leave the job unfinished. Do, does the town staff allow for them to finish the job or just say tough luck, come back next time with a battery? Tough luck, tough luck, tough luck, sir? Tough luck. So they finish the job, the, how is the resident notified then that, um?
And I, again, I go back to the homeowner. They're in front of us, they reinforce his desire not to use them in the end. So I have, I have no qualms about it.
We're going to have a lot of comments, I think.
I don't know. Okay. And it's, it's blowing leaves. It's not removing poison. I mean, like.
Right. And in that case, the resident would have a flyer or some other kind of notice and email that, you know, your landscaper was found to be in violation of the law during the time.
They can be encouraged to rake, you know, there is an old fashioned alternative, they guess the leaves off the lawn.
True. This is true.
Some of those test conversations are with residents who are home when the landscaper is instructed to stop. So.
Well.
Well, then you can take and remove those to say you're violation. Why? I, I do that. That doesn't mean that they're like, oh.
I think, I think we're, I think we're.
I would get my own rake and, and rake the other.
I think we're well aware.
Any extended conversations with, you know, you, you should walk away when you get an irate citizen confronting you like that. That should not have to be something that you police. You know, you can try to enforce, but you are not the police and you should just walk away.
So.
And it's not up to you to make sure that the guy stops. I mean, you need to tell them, you know, he's, he, he needs to stop. This is in violation. If that means leaving this unfinished, that's what's going to have to happen. And if the homeowner gets confrontational about that, there's nothing you, no one expects you to do anything about that.
So it's possible that, um, as, as Dave should walks away and the resident will say to their company, just keep going.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just.
And once the Montgomery County regulation goes into effect and we figure out who's enforcing it, and if it gets to that point, that will be. You think it'll be the town?
It will be the town. Yeah, it will be now, after hours and on weekends, any sort of complaints can be sent on to DEP, but.
My guess is that once the county describes an enforcement and delegates that authority to the town, getting a citation from the county is a lot.
It's going to get people's attention.
It's going to get people's attention.
Yeah.
Cause the county has the resources to vote in court for these people.
That's right.
They'll do it.
That's right.
So, you know, let's, let's rely on the county to its job.
Right. Well, that's another reason why I wasn't so much pushing for a 2024 ban either, you know, makes it a little easier at 25. So anyway.
Back to Rich's point, if this is not reaching the citation stage generally anyway, not, not an issue.
At least not so far in the partial year ban. Okay. Those were all the questions unless Dave, you had others, uh, that popped up.
That covers, I guess.
That covers it.
About how we get the word out about the hours allowed in four days and, uh, figure out.
Yeah.
So as your druthers to, you, you've already started a, uh, a new informational sheet.
I mean, I have one ready to go.
Yeah. So I don't know, does Joy, do you want the, do you want the committee to look at it and? Or do you want him to go ahead and do a?
Um, no, I, I think it's fine. It's, it's in both languages, right? In English and Spanish? Oh, it's not. We should have it translated.
It's basically just a notice of violations. Hey, you're using this, here's the regulation.
Yeah. So we can get it translated into Spanish. Somebody in town speaks Spanish, somebody could.
Well, there was a, a previous, uh.
The previous one I thought was.
Version, English, Spanish, that, that a lo- long time ago on the flyer, that was English and Spanish.
Informational flyers or notice of violations or not.
Oh, the informational flyer is what I was asking about actually, that.
You're talking about the updated hours for the, uh.
I'm talking about the citation. The warning, I'm so sorry. The warning, the warning thing.
I'm sorry. Okay. Well, the person who, um, who translated was Matilda Farin. She did the Spanish translation. So since Donald is a fan now, maybe we can reach out to them. Okay. Is there anything else people want to cover for the evening?
That's me.
Okay. Well, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.